I'd like to welcome everybody to the city council meeting work session. We'll start right here with number one, proposal to form a neighborhood watch group.
Yes.
Do you want to take it back, Carrie?
Yes, I sent you all the charter with the initial members that would be on there with Erin Gilbert, who is here in the audience as the first chair, if any of you have not yet met Erin. He is very qualified for this. Deputy Dutton and I have been working on this for a couple of months now. He is not here tonight, he has to attend another city council meeting, but we've catch base. It's just a small membership to start, just to get us going. We will add others as needed and to show diversity of like we've had with all of our other committees, geographic, gender, age. You know, whatever diversity we can do, we will have, but this at least gets us started. Deputy Dutton has, we changed the name from Neighborhood Watch, which is on the agenda, to Community Watch. Neighborhood Watch is a national program that has certain things that you have to have in it. They're twelve argument. So, so we have changed that to Community Watch so that we can tailor it to what we, what is specific to our city. And then with that, we will be kind of, he, Deputy Dutton has done something similar in other communities in our county, and so he has a template for us to start with that Sheriff's Office feels comfortable with, and then we'll have input from the committee. We know that there are, there has been talk of maybe some partnerships in the community that we might want to investigate and look at. But with that, we put together basically a simple charter that said that Erin would serve as the first chair, that we would have at least five members minimum. It could be going up, and like other committees, might have subcommittees, and then a member of the council as well as a member of law enforcement with the liaisons. And so are there any questions with regards to that, or do you want me to introduce Erin more, or do you have to?
Let's start with Erin.
Yeah. Let's hear more about Erin.
Why would you want to do this? Tell them a little bit about you, Erin.
Okay. Well, I've been a, my most qualified part of it is that I've been a Boy Scout leader for twenty-one years. I've always liked to be prepared. I've also been an entry instructor for almost twenty years as well. And I've been helping people learn about gun safety, and I believe in the value of self-protection and our community protection. I've always believed that in any event, disaster, it's important that we look at it not as an individual by yourself, that you are part of a community and that we as a whole need to be able to stand and work together to be able to protect ourselves, protect our property, protect our rights. And those are things that I stand for, and I'm just, I'm happy to.
Protect our resources, especially our water.
Yes, absolutely. I can go into a lot more detail.
We can just keep it simple for now.
Just keep it simple. But yes, the idea is if law enforcement ever needs support, I think I'd like to have some trained individuals who can help support to a certain level. You know, I don't want to, you know, create that, we call it a SEAL Team Six group. Yes, correct, we don't want to do that very often, we want to be able to provide support to our law enforcement brothers and sisters.
So I feel that Erin is very qualified, and that's why I place him forward as the, as the chair. I would serve as liaison, Deputy Dutton will serve as the liaison to law enforcement and to the council as well. And then we can go forward with the names that were submitted. Those were names that Erin, Erin put together, and then we will work as a committee to, to get more involved. And then as we see fit to have, after we get it more established through Deputy Dutton, we will see where we would have these subcommittees. And where we can partner with, with other people, whether it's the state or, or we have two churches in our city, you know, our fire department already partners with them on fire protection. But there, it had been brought to our attention that there might be some need for other protections there as well. So just, just keeping it kind of broad right now, but then getting into some details as we go along. So that's my proposal.
Thank you. Oh yeah. As you can see, I am a ham radio operator. I am very versed in helping train others to be able to be ham radio operators because in the last ditch scenario, and we're dependent on communication, I think ham radios and it's the skill sets to be able to manage communication as a support again for law enforcement, for the city officials to be able to communicate what's going on within our city in a timely manner.
That is very important because our current hand radio operator is moving.
Yeah.
Craig Boyer, and I told him he is not allowed to move, but now that I know that Erin is qualified, I feel much better.
And he's reliable, so.
Can I ask what your profession is?
Yes, I, I own a defense company.
Okay.
I manufacture ballistic protection products for people, vehicles, and buildings.
Why do you have a trouble finding ammo, though? Because that shouldn't be the.
No, it is. But I do support law enforcement, military, that with my products primarily. It's just.
This is the way to answer that. Thanks, thanks for doing this, sir.
A pleasure, Chris.
Carrie, can we ask, can we ask what the, what the purpose of this is? I mean, I think of Neighborhood Watch, which we're not calling itself. I just.
Well, the purpose.
I don't want to pit neighbor against neighbor.
Right. And that's not the purpose, isn't to put neighbor against neighbor, but it is, it is a group, a committee under the, under the direction of the council that if we needed additional help, like on the Fourth of July, obviously the fire department right now does some things. But there's also some incidents where maybe the deputy doesn't necessarily need to be involved, and he's going to help identify those things, such as curfew violators who are in the middle of the night, just walking the streets, or Daryl has people that are trespassing, and if the Neighborhood Watch people could maybe come over and say, hey, you know what, this is a public property. But there are certain things that the deputy has this identifying that might be more nuisance oriented, but not necessarily criminal, that he might can have assistance. So if someone, especially if it's, it's in the night, someone doesn't have to be, a deputy doesn't have to be called up if, if it's been determined or if something's happening right away and the deputy says, we're fifteen minutes out or ten minutes out, he can call Erin and say, can you get the license plate? We might can get him down the hill as we're coming up. You know, so there's, there's a whole bunch of different things that it may or may not be, depending on, we're just going to get it started, put together that framework of what it could be, and then go, go from there under the direction of the deputy as law enforcement for the city. We're not going to cross any boundaries or do anything rogue. We're just going to be an asset to both.
So if this could perhaps help the sheriff get here quicker? I mean, giving license plates to the nine one one does nothing, trust me. I've been there, I've done that many times, it does nothing. In terms of the curfew, I believe the city's ordinance has a misdemeanor attached to the curfew ordinance. So how would the committee be able to do?
Well, that's the kinds of things that we're going to look into is with the deputy's help on what we can and cannot do. I mean, we have a code enforcer now for certain codes, and so it might tie into that. It, there's a variety of things that we need to flesh out to kind of see where we're, where we're at on this. It also helps that they might do patrols that say, oh, there's something up here at three AM going really slow down a dead end street, what are they doing? And those kinds of things, right?
I would say it's mostly observed and reported.
Observing reports.
I would not consider any people that I'm working with to actually confront.
No.
Yeah. So that actually gets the point that as I, I read this charter, the meat on the bones that I feel is lacking is rules of engagement.
Right, well, and that's one.
So I would not be voting for this charter as it's currently written because I think it's important that we have rules of engagement and what is not going to be engaged. This is an example, when, when I was in charge of the Freedom Festival, right? I had to make up rules of engagement for all the security teenagers that we had in the security shirts who had zero legal authority. And in fact, had even some, some really, the only thing they got was a shirt with a badge on it that looked kind of cool.
So maybe you say, hey, get back off that line.
But I had to be really careful in training them.
Right.
Okay, you can do this, you can do that, but you can't, you know.
Right.
If, and then if this falls outside your scope, here's what you're going to do. You're going to be calling us. We actually have ham operators every block, and we would have the ham operator call the sheriff. And then the sheriff would come and take care of whatever the real problem was.
Those rules of engagement are the plan that Deputy Dutton is working on right now. And so he, and that's why him as the liaison to our law enforcement, that those rules of engagement will be put in by law enforcement that then says, here are our boundaries. This is what we're doing, this is what we need to help with, etc.
From his perspective, but I think as a city, we can do it from our perspective.
All right.
It needs to be from both, both ways.
We can add that in.
You know, I'm, I'm not asking for an entire operations manual.
So can we tonight then pass this so they can get started adding a line that says?
I think we can pass the part where we create the committee. I would not vote for this, the charter. But I think we can vote for the committee, and then the committee can, can develop the charter.
You know, a possible idea too is Deputy Dutton gives a report usually in the city council meeting, and we hear things like so many domestic disturbances. He kind of gives a little list about the calls. Are there a certain type of call that they're getting more than others? Focus in that direction.
Yeah, well, because that, that's part of this charter is kind of developing strategies around maintaining a safe community. So I would assume it would be like doing analysis on the types of calls that are coming in, and then, okay, what are some things we can do to prevent? That part, I, I, I love that part. I think that's a good, a good part that can be done. Again, the only thing that's lacking to me is I, this is kind of like saying, hey, we're going to create this committee, and their responsibilities are so broad that they can really do whatever, and we don't know what they're doing. That's what worries me. So I think there, I think there just needs to be a little more flesh on the bones before we move forward.
Now, I'd like to see also, you know, and I know Erin's a little bit disadvantaged here because he's just barely, well, just barely, he's been in the city, you know, what, you've lived here for a year and a half.
Yeah.
Year and a half, but you know, Maple Canyon side of the city is looking pretty good on committee members. It'd be nice to see if we can, you know.
Yeah, and that's what I, I explained that to him already, but I asked him to reach out to people that he might know who would be interested in at least starting, and then we can expand to the rest, especially once we kind of get that overview from the deputy on what is it going to entail and, and how many people we think should be on it, you know, overall, yeah.
Erin, if you need to, you can talk to Jody as well. I'm just going to throw Jody under the vice.
I will, I'm going to send you now that they have a chance to look at it, I will forward you the charter as, as was written.
Since I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah. Yeah.
You'll see what I mean then.
Okay, let's, let's move to number two then. So it's proposal to amend the title of city code six dash one dash three to include parking. Is this a, you wing?
It's primarily, I think, with Craig, who's been working on it with the deputy.
Now, as far as I know, it's just a title change. It's just to include a subcategory of that ordinance.
Instead of impoundment of vehicle, what does it say?
Towing impoundment vehicles to parking towing and impoundment vehicles. So it's just a clarification shift. Got any questions there?
Be nice if, I mean, I, I don't necessarily disagree, but I'm just curious. Like, what are we?
Because there's no more place in the city code that defines parking, and that is the place where they talk about parking. And so.
Okay, so it's just change the title so it's easier to search.
Yeah.
Okay.
It changes nothing as far as what we're enforcing, how we've been enforcing things. It just makes it easier to search when we want to equip our regulations.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay, number three, so August ninth, two thousand twenty-two, we will be having a truth in taxation hearing. This will be a public meeting for any new residents to come, ask questions there. Are we doing a kind of presentation on what that looks like, like it did in the past? Or is this the finance committee? Maybe that's a Chris question, oh, Chris has his hand up. Chris, what do you got for us?
Oh, is my hand up? That was an accident if it was, but, um, yeah. No, the good thing is this year, because the way the property taxes have been adjusted, that the rate increase is going to be minimal. So it's, it's, don't have the, the final numbers to present to you tonight, like the percentage, but what we had anticipated before is it's like fifty thousand dollars, fifty seven thousand dollars is all we need to continue to raise for next year. So very minimal property tax hike or increase, or whatever we want to call it now.
Thank you. I'll ignore your hand for the rest of the meeting.
We could certainly put together some things, but I mean, I think we've got these charts here with the revenues and.
Which is helpful.
I think the more, again, I keep coming back to the certified tax rate. I think that is the most honest way of describing what's really going on. And so having a graph of that wouldn't be a bad idea. And I've already got that mostly over the years, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be hard to do something like that. But again, it, it's up to the mayor, it's the mayor's meeting, so.
Mary, do you have anything you want to add there?
Uh, no, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't have any real agenda for that. I'll have to get with Chris and discuss, because, you know, as my first one, I'm not really sure what the expectation is, but it's, it's on the radar, so I'll make sure I get something to each of you before, before long, and not right up against the deadline.
Wonderful. Okay, anybody else there? Okay, then, number four, we'll go into the reports. Corbin, Public Works and Building, do you have anything?
We talked about doing garbage. One of the hurdles to do that is kind of some place to park the trucks. And could we, I know we're trying to put numbers together, or Chris is asking to put some numbers together. Can we have the public works committee do that?
I don't have a problem with that. David?
Is that, we, we certainly asked. Now, let's make sure we understand exactly what we're asking. So you're wanting the Public Works Committee to put together some numbers on what it would cost for a public works building?
No, everything associated with doing garbage in a house.
Okay, so Corbin and I run a bunch of numbers, we've got a lot of information, but it needs to be updated with current. Well, that might be tricky, the current market numbers, and just kind of scroll it, see what we missed, things of that. So if you and Erin meet with Mark, we can pass that all. Anything else, Corbin? No? Okay. Myself, Utah Valley Solid Waste District, we haven't met. There's nothing really going on beyond the construction, still is going full steam ahead for the new transfer station. I met on the board for the, the baby, not baby, the, the New Era weight or dump. And they've got some fun things going on, they've got a little bit of infrastructure, they've got a two million dollar project that they're currently working on. And then a few of our other local dumps going up the valley are working on putting in natural gas leach fields to be able to farm the natural gas off of the dump, of their dumps. New Era already has that in predominantly most of it. And they are looking to put it into the new expansion zones that they're working on there in New Era, so.
Just as a side note, emergency managers just took tours of all of the facilities in the county and solid waste facilities and then just because there could be hazardous spills, there could be fires at the dumps, there could be a lot of different things. And so that was kind of an interesting perspective for us to see, other than just garbage just going there. So.
You see what we need in the transfer station? It's bad.
So it was an interesting, it was an interesting thing to be able to talk about.
Laurel, number one.
I reported on the May meeting, they canceled the June meeting, and the next one is the day after tomorrow, so looking forward to that. They'll hold elections this next meeting, so if you want back in to be some sort of officer. Uh, no, we got you. Probably go over that and I have a talk Thursday. I have a note to talk, to find out if we have anything to do with the nine eight eight mental health hotline.
That's one of the things that you need to ask about, because that goes into effect this Saturday, is when it takes, it takes effect in the state. And as far as I know, it will be put through the dispatch centers. That will be like nine one one will go there, and nine eight eight should be going through the same system. And then, and that's nationwide. Again, that was a, that was something that came out of our Utah Legislature. And when they were looking for a three-digit number just for our state, it was, there wasn't anything there. And so our general delegation got together, Representative Chris Stewart and at that time Senator Orrin Hatch, then put it through nationally to get a national number. So that would be easy for anyone, whether you were a veteran, whether you were a teenager or whoever who had, who had the need for mental health assistance to be able to just do nine eight eight right then and get attached to someone in your local area, similar to nine one one.
So if it goes through our dispatch center, they better talk about it, so.
Yeah, it, it goes online nationally on Saturday.
Okay, so I'll mind that, I'll have a big report next month.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Yes.
Because I suggested that would be a good article to put in the newsletter.
Maybe you can write something up for us. That'd be great.
I will.
Thanks, I just, just get it to me, since the summer ones, we're only doing the one for each month. I need all of your reports by, I, let's see, I'll have to look at the calendar and I'll tell you what day and goodbye. Because there's so many people traveling that it makes it difficult. Let's say by the twenty second, by Friday the twenty second, anything that you want in, including Women's Health Day, et cetera, let's try to get in by the twenty second, and that will be for the August newsletter.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt you, but this is a national number you're saying.
This is a national number, yep. That will be associated then, just like nine one one is, if we call here, it doesn't go to a national, like goes to our local through this. And that's what will happen with this number as well. Each state and county is responsible for the response.
Okay.
Yeah. Animal shelter.
So South, South Utah Valley Animal Shelter, we just had a meeting today. They just talked about your end budget, all balanced, good. And then all the animals that they took in for the, from the hoarding, from the breeders, those have all found new homes. So they didn't have to euthanize any of them, so that was good. And then they were installing security cameras around the building. They've had some issues with just when people are dropping things off. So they're, it's part of their budget, they're going to install some security. Um, a couple side notes, so PTR, we finished the map, we identified a couple of possibilities for like a new trail, park agreement, the development agreement with Summit Creek was that they would be donating some money for some possible new trails. And we found a couple possibilities. We met with Corbin, and Corbin had the idea that we could incorporate, because a lot of them are in drainage ditches, that maybe we could incorporate, you know, some other things in there too that are needed, like future sewer or pipes or whatever, while we're doing it and doing trails just to make it more, and do some fire breaks, things like that. So we're gonna, I'm gonna meet with Wayne, like I said, we've got this big map, we spent a lot of time on it. So we'll, we'll get with you the next few days. And then I have something else, so I was asked to do the deer study. So I had a good chat with Randy today, and we talked about it. And hopefully the mayor's listening, but the population is down twenty-five percent statewide. And that's due to the ongoing drought and also the chronic wasting disease. So there's actually not more deer, there's quite a few less. Randy said that if we wanted to do, and Randy Larson is part of the DWR.
Right.
He works for them, and he's a different. So he said that if we wanted to do a deer study, there's two options. He said one of them was simple estimates of how many deer are in the city. And that would be just kind of them watching over time and observing. But he said the way that you tell is if it's impacting the vegetation. So if you feel like the natural vegetation is really being eaten down, they kind of do it, but it takes several years to do that study. And the other one is if you want to collar the deer and track their movements in and out of the city. Like I said, that gets really expensive really quick. And then he told me about three cities that have done, where they've actually tried to reduce the population. About four years ago, they paid to have the deer transplanted out to a location. It was five. What? Yeah. Probably. It was five hundred dollars per deer. And it was not successful, they said many of the deer died because they have a certain environment, and when you take them too far out of their environment, they became, a lot of them didn't make it.
Maybe when they moved out of Iowa, same problem.
Yeah.
Provo City is paying hitmen to shoot them in the night at a cost of four hundred dollars per deer.
Shoot them at night?
When the residents are sleeping.
We used to have residents who'd hit them in the car.
Erin, did you hear that?
Look at silencers.
Alpine City went through a whole process of certifying the citizens, and somebody texted me a bunch of information about this process, but apparently you can certify your citizens to shoot the deer and do it safely.
Were they doing bow hunting?
Yes, with bows and arrows, and it still costs about four hundred dollars per head. So all the options are very expensive.
Alpine didn't think it was very successful either, because although they, you get rid of some, more just come down. I mean.
So what would be less expensive is to just get the neighbors to get rid of their salt mix?
Yes, and they're watching troughs, and stop feeding them oats.
Or wolves.
Yeah.
Yes, cougars.
We do have some cougars, so.
By the way, yes, on the cougar note, there are two that they've been tracking around the city. And they're, they're on, they're mostly around Maple Canyon. They've been tracking their activity.
They've been coming on Sky Lake, so some of our neighbors have seen them. And the bear was on, oh, in my backyard not too long ago.
Yep, we had fair, so just so you know, yeah, the cougars, they're, the cougars are be hitting themselves. They said they're, they're being pretty, they're not causing any havoc, so they're not doing anything with them, they're just tracking, so. Anyway, so it was Randy's opinion that we do not need to do anything to mitigate the deer at this time.
Sorry, that's my opinion.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah, I, I do think some of the information that you just shared would also be really useful in a newsletter.
Yeah, I have something.
It's written, here you go.
Along with the reminder.
Tell me to write it, it's, it would be.
If you want to, how, if you want it to be in newsletter form or be in this?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
But along with the reminder that, come on people, we moved into their territory.
And that was what Randy said, he said, you know, he works for the DWR, and he said, I don't have a fence, I have the hardest time, I can't afford a garden. He said, but my wife and I, we know, we moved into deer country. Like, that's where we moved, and we have to deal with it.
Well, to remind everyone, we do have an ordinance about not feeding the wildlife.
We do.
And so we might want to include that in your.
It's a resolution.
Or a resolution, you might want to put that in there, just to remind people, we can put it to the league. It doesn't really stop anyone from doing it, but the new people or people who have been thinking about it might say, eh, maybe I get it now.
You can feed the birds, but you'll feed the people.
Well, I can't tell you how many countries have put salt in this one, too. Jeff and I pulled a new capitol.
And the thing is, like.
Look at it this way, you got your food storage.
Well, the chronic wasting disease is taking a lot of the population. And that's another reason why they don't want to transplant them or move them is because then if, if the disease is here, you move the deer, then you're spreading the disease. So the DWR said that's not even an option anymore, they will not let you transplant. So the DWR said that's not even an option anymore, they will not let you transplant deer.
But if you have a dead deer in your property, DWR will come and get it, so you add that in, in that too. Because, because that, that um is helpful for residents to know to call and say. There's one in my yard right now, oh my gosh, what do I do, right?
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
Carrie, Utah Lake?
Yeah, Utah Lake, things are going really well, um. And just to start off, if you do, I mean, every, the only thing everybody hears in the news is if, when there's an algae bloom. Utah Lake is huge, if there's an algae bloom in a specific area, it is. It is, it stays in that area and the rest of the lake is still usable and it dissipates, they have um programs in place that dissipate it. Pretty quickly and it's not toxic to, to people, but it is unsightly. But to go with that, um, there's twenty-seven acts, there's, there's twenty-seven acts, it's only about, you know, it's not very deep. Uh, it has to have um, it's like perfect conditions, every single freshwater lake in our state gets an algae bloom. Every single one, um, perfect conditions of the heat. The lack of wind and then the depth of the water is what contributes to that. Um, but anyways, uh, there's twenty seven, seven access points around the lake, there's five marinas, we have now installed cameras in all five marinas so that. Uh, people can, and then there's also cameras in the lake. So that if you wanna say, I wanna take my boat out, but I don't, I wanna see which marina that isn't crowded, you can look. Or you can see um on the lake, um, if there's a lot of wind. While you're out on the lake, you can use your app and you can check the wind conditions, cause that is one of the safety hazards of being far away. And then not realizing when you're out in the middle of there. Sometimes you don't even know which city is closest. It's really tough, but I wanted to just tell you a little bit about the annual report that just came out from last year. It is um. We had twenty-five point one million dollars in funding that was mostly um grant money. Uh, with a little bit from the legislature, we had nearly fourteen hundred hours of volunteer work and. The marinas are currently being upgraded. Um, there are ten projects going on around the lake. Uh, the most, uh, maybe one that you hear about the most is the Provo River Delta Project. The Ward Caraway Project and then some of those other marina updates. Uh, we have some community outreach, um, projects going on, the one that Woodland Hills has participated in is the life jacket loner program. There are five stations around, so if you have, um, if you're cleaning out this summer and you say, I'm getting new life jackets and your old ones are still good. You can donate them to the lake commission and they have these five stations, so. What they're finding is people who have a boat have life jackets because it's the law. But people who go out and say, I'm gonna be on my kayak or my paddleboard. They don't realize how far off the shore they're getting and those are the people that's getting in trouble. So they get there, they can grab a life jacket, use it while they're out and then put it, hang it back up and have it done. Um, there's um. Thirteen point five million is spent right now on trails around the lake shore, there's seventy-two miles of trail eventually that will go around the total lake. Each city kind of has a little section, but there's now um the ability to maybe start filling that in. So that we will have a really great trail system all the way around, which will connect into the Spanish Fork Trail System on the south end. Um, that's coming along, um. There was a lot of outreach, we've been trying to put a lot of things in our newsletter about some of the things that are happening around the lake and. I get reports that show how many people from Woodland Hills are participating in those planned. Um, events like the scavenger hunt that just happened, because teens sign up and it shows their, where they're from, so. We can get reports that show, um, same with photography contests, we have quite a few photographers who. Who have entered and won prizes in the, in the lake competition and so it's something that, that um. Were able to participate in and we might, we have a great view of the lake. But we don't always realize how much our, our citizens really do utilize the lake, so.
Thank you. Uh, David, why? We have not met, so nothing to report. Mayor, do you wanna jump in on SSD, cover mag?
Uh, yeah, we didn't have a, a mag meeting this month, um, and then SESD, I don't have anything to report, I. Um, attended the board meeting uh this morning after our legal call. Uh, and uh, other than Janet, uh, you do know that they've got some money set aside for Woodland Hills Day, um, I can coordinate. Getting that uh with you, but uh, I, I don't think that it's been delivered yet.
Yeah, I don't think we have it yet. I'll, I'll reach out to you, we can work on that.
Okay, that's everything, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. And I feel to even just excuse the mayor, the mayor is not feeling well as you can probably hear.
Brent, are you still there? I am, sorry, I was.
Chris, we lost internet connection for a minute.
Yeah, I was gonna say it sounded like we lost something.
We're back, can you guys hear us?
Yes.
Wonderful, okay.
But uh, thank you.
We will adjourn the work session. Um, and you guys wanna do a break or do you wanna just crank through? Okay, no break. Um, so the mayor will call us to order, apparently, no. Um, we will have uh our pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Lund and then invocation from Councilmember Pratt.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to meet this night, grateful for our citizens. And especially this hot time beer, we're grateful for the protection which uh gives us. And we pray that that would bless us this night, that we might make good decisions and. That we might deliberate with stability and, and love for the area and. Opportunity that we have to live here and save us in the name of Jesus Christ. Thank you, okay, we'll move to our public comments, um, public comments are limited to two minutes or less. Comments submitted by email need to be received prior to three P M. the day of the meeting. To be included as part of the official record, email comments will not be read aloud during the meeting, but will be distributed to the council. And included into the official record. So is there anybody here in the room with us that has a, a comment they'd like to share? Carrie?
Um, my comment has to do with Janet and my meeting with Corbett and going over the. All the plan maps and the city and the possible trails. I'm wondering if there's a way to show, Corbett mentioned a couple of roads, you know, that would really be in need of drainage or fire breaks or whatever, if we had like an overlap. Where we knew exactly where those were. When we need with planning to give an idea about where future trails would be, cause.
Yeah.
I, I have a map, I'm guessing Wayne has that information. Do you know? He's just sitting there quiet.
Well, as it relates to new, to trails, new trails. Uh, some of that would be determined when the developer. That. Is wanting to be developing property. Um, and, and looking then at where drainage ditches are, drainage channels or other areas. Uh, aside from that developing property, it's owned by the city. That we, that would accommodate trail putting in there, so it's, it's uh. We need, it, it's a challenge to look forward enough to know, but uh we need, there is still. A need to have that forward looking. Uh, to kind of plan as we run forward. And set areas aside for possible trails, so. Once we look at that map and kind of define those areas. As possibilities, then that'll kind of start to take shape and. Know that this is an area that we think will possibly accommodate a trail and what do we need to do then to facilitate that? And move forward in that direction.
And the two areas we identified are on city property that are just current drainage areas, so. It's not on anyone's private property, we were very careful about that.
Well, and if there has to be a connection on private property, one thing that PTR might wanna consider is. Identifying those areas and, and talking to those property owners about trail leases. Because undeveloped property and getting a trail easement is, might be a little easier than those that um, that have already have construction.
The ones that we found actually have a little section that's either owned by the city that gives access. Or, you know, it just naturally is, so.
It may make sense for me and I can, I'll, I'll talk with the mayor offline, but. If it's okay if Corbett joins our next PTR meeting, if it works for Corbett's schedule. And then maybe even Wayne, so that we're, cause we're kind of running in three spheres with this PTR initiative, so.
Also a new development by. Up above the water tank perhaps, or down through whose property is it that goes down for its four seasons. That greatly piece, ten things, so if a development agreement was to be formed, we can look at connecting trails through those areas.
Well, thank you, Sheri.
Just to throw in here, if any trail work, the fire department's really interested in taking those opportunities to create fire breaks.
Yeah.
Like maybe removing brush along our roadways. Uh, opportunities like this would be really appreciated.
Wonderful, that'll be good if you want to committee there.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the areas is actually uh the ravine that's in between uh Woodland Hills and Summit Creek, so that would be a nice fire break area. So and it was, it's an area that we could work with Summit Creek and connect and have like a joint trail. Cause it wouldn't, and it would not be like a joint one, it would be one that was Woodland Hill City one. So that's a possibility as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? Wonderful, then we'll close the public comment. Um, and we'll go to consent agenda, so we will go to. Um, city council meetings, minutes for the May twenty-fourth and June fourteenth. Thank you, Jody, I harassed Jody all day that is. Looking for details, so. She was quick to, of course I started at what, ten last night? Thank you for giving the policy. Jody, do I vote as normal? Okay, um, then those in favor?
Aye.
Those uh not in favor? This is hard, Eric. You can have your job back.
I actually like the view from here, so uh.
Okay, so business and discussion number twelve, um. The decision is to approve a proposal to form a neighborhood, we'll scratch that to go to community. Uh, watch group. Um, and I wanna kind of, can I break this out, Jody?
You can break it out, the committee members and charter.
Perfect, okay, so. Can I get a motion for approving the creation of the community watch group?
I like a motion.
Yep, and I will second it, and with the names that I have proposed.
Okay, so we'll do members as well. So we've got uh.
Carrie can make the motion and I'll second it if she adds to it something.
Aaron, are you okay with the members that are suggested?
Yeah.
I still need to know.
Same as ours.
About as much as our.
I was just thinking of Scott.
So we weren't together a lot, yeah, yeah.
Any, any consideration for Jim and us?
We haven't had a chance to discuss that, but I have, I have the name, I have a list of.
And you got the, the other ones?
I was, I was actually gonna propose and put a little notice at the bulletin.
Oh.
That goes out for anybody that wants to box here.
Yeah.
Um, I don't see why there's a major limitation on why.
Yeah, we don't have that.
Well, again, I think, I think, you know, you, depending upon how the charter flushes out, you can always have your committee members. And then you can have your community watch members, they don't necessarily have to be the same. Oh, no, I agree.
Well, that's why we'll have subcommittees.
They'll have leadership versus.
Different things.
Organizations. Yeah. Okay, so I've got a motion by Carrie, a second by Janet, um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? Okay, that has passed. Um, are we wanting to table the charter then? I would move to table the charter, okay, I'll second that. Okay, tabled. That I, all in favor? I, I've never seen us do this part, yeah. Any opposed to this?
I just never had to run it.
Exactly, but I've never seen us like split something and have it slid in. It is. Um, and then the proposal to amend city code title six dash one dash three. Um, to include parking. So do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve that. Okay.
I'll second it.
Jen, perfect, this one's a roll call. So Councilmember Lund?
Yes.
Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Councilmember Keston?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hillier?
Yes.
Passed. Wonderful, and. I, I don't think we're heading into a closed session. That, you heard, Jody, Mayor?
I thought we were going to have something to discuss some people matters.
Mayor, did you wanna go into a closed session?
Well, uh, I mean, we do have some updates, so uh, we, we certainly could, so if, if the council would like to. And seeing that we're not gonna be meeting for a month, there's probably some value in it, but uh. It, I'll defer to whatever each of you uh decides, but uh, there is an update.
I'll make a motion that we want to close session.
I'll second that. Um, all in favor? Aye. Yeah, any opposed? Okay, and we'll move into a closed session. Um, so we're just gonna discuss legal, so if anybody. Wants to, uh, that can stay, those that can, we have to keep people who have a, well, thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming.
And we will see you on August ninth. Okay, we're closing.
Okay, now. The dirt load up to the tanks, the, the hotter it gets, the drier it gets. The, the road we drive on that road, it's just pulverized. We've. We, I put a tow to the back of the service truck, I, I got a pump from Craig. Um, we're gonna water that truck once, I mean, I have to drive up in the tanks three times a week anyways. And so we're gonna water, just so you're aware, I told Sherry already.
Oh, I was gonna tell her, good.
But we're.
To keep the dust down, is that trying?
I'm trying to keep the dust down.
She appreciated that.
Corbett, I know that the city doesn't necessarily own that road, or at least to a point, like. Do we maintain it, like, should we be putting rock in or anything like that?
I think David Taylor's made it very clear that when you're done with your thing, he's gonna pay it.
Yeah, Dave wants, Dave wants to pay it, I just. You know, I've talked to Matt, but because you pay the right, if, if you do that basin up there. Um, you're gonna haul five thousand truckloads of dirt up there.
Yeah, so we don't wanna.
Any asphalt is gonna be destroyed.
And David's very pro of that plan.
Yeah, and then he wants to, then he wants to pay it afterwards, yeah.
Yeah, I, I know we wait because something's coming and nothing ever gets done, but.
Yeah.
You want, you want an asphalt right now? Spend money, you want an additional road base right now?
That's fine.
Will that fix it? I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Corbett. Okay, then uh if we're done, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Okay.
Hey, thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
See you guys. See you guys.